Good evening, everyone. This is the September 24th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members. Councilor Guanasso?
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe?
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky?
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 17th, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number three, that was taken up during the previous committee of the whole meeting. Perfect. At this time, may I ask for a suspension of rules? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. I just want to take up a couple of department heads that I believe were here. So we're going to take up calendar item number 12 first. Communication from Healthy Community Initiatives requesting adoption of a complete street policy. And Councilor Zambudo is being marked as recused from discussion on this matter.
Julie DiMauro, Healthy Community Initiatives Office. I am here tonight to ask you to consider to adopt this complete street policy for the city of Revere. In your packet, you should have received just a one-page sheet, the benefits of why becoming a MassDOT complete street community is important to the city of Revere, also a copy of the policy, and then the appendix of work scheduling that we have been using for the last couple of years and a lot of the projects that we do within the city in regards to street and sidewalk work. As I mentioned, we already do a lot of the concepts that are listed in the guide that is before you, but if we are to adopt this policy, we'll be able to apply for additional MassDOT funding up to $450,000. $50,000 of that will help us create a prioritized plan of all the street and sidewalk work that needs to be done within the city, and then we'd be able to pick 15 to 20 projects from that plan, submit that to MassDOT, and we would be able to apply up to $400,000 for any projects on that approved list.
Great. Do any councilors have any questions regarding this communication? Councilor Morabito?
Thank you. How are you identifying which projects are added to the list?
So we would actually hire a consultant, and what they would be doing is they would go throughout the whole city and they would look at all of the sidewalks, make sure that they're compliant, ADA compliances, curb ramps, curb cuts. If they're not, those would be prioritized. They would look at all the signalization along all of our most traveled corridors, being Broadway, Shirley Ave., and they would check the timing of the lights, see how the traffic would flow. All of that would be categorized in a report. Some other cities and towns that have done this route, they've gotten very detailed reports about projects that need to be done, so it would be citywide. The only projects that we would not be able to take into consideration would be anything that's state-owned or federally owned, so Bell Circle would not be a consideration. Anything along Squire Road would not be a consideration. It would be our own city roads and sidewalks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. You say state roadways would not be included in this? And why would that be? I mean, isn't this something the city could go on record as asking for?
So we could ask for the funding for our own roadway, for our own roadways, but the state roads, they, MassDOT is already covering them. We could advocate for changes, any of the state roadways that we connect with our roadway, so it would be Beach Street to Bell Circle and then to Shirley Ave. We would look at that and say, you know, we were thinking about making these accommodations. We would like the state to step in and make the similar accommodations in that piece that we don't own.
Because I had noticed up in community development that there were some postings up there asking people what particular colors they were interested in, for the crosswalks.
For the crosswalks?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We have a sheet upstairs that talks about different types of colorization for crosswalks and bike lanes. That is separate from this, but that is something that would be considered.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other councilors? No? Madam Clerk, can we call the roll?
Thank you.
On the policy, shall the city council adopt the complete street policy? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo is recused, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the policy has been adopted. This time, we'll return to the regular order of business. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number four. This is a motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the city council award certificates of commendation to the owners of Safi Market, Kelly's Roast Beef, and The Good Diner for donating food to victims of the Franklin Avenue fire.
I think this speaks for itself. Is there anybody else that you might want to add, Councilor Novoselsky?
I do, if I may.
Please.
Action Services, because they, after the fight was over, they actually went into the building to save the properties and personal items of the victims, so I think they went above and beyond.
No, Councilor, there was another person who brought in like a whole bunch of food. I forget her name.
It was, I believe it was Vani Hoot.
Yeah. Vani deserves some recognition, for sure. So if we could add Vani to this as well, I greatly appreciate that as well as action.
We'll check with her, because I think there was one other person that was with her, so...
Please, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Councilor.
Perfect. So we'll schedule this to be held at 5:30 on October 22nd, Committee of the Whole, prior to the council meeting? All right. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Public hearings, calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on the application of a Beer Group Inc., 333 Great River Road, Somerville, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to expand and alter a nonconforming structure by adding a second floor to the existing footprint of the structure on lots 205 and 206 at 148 Squire Road. Any proponents here this evening?
Yes, to the city council, Joseph Cotojio, 1 Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicant. Beer Group seeking this special permit to modify a nonconforming building by adding a second floor to the existing footprint. What we are really doing in connection with adding that second floor is giving the building an entire facelift. Those of you familiar with the property, it's right in the middle of Squire Road, which would be very beneficial to the city of Revere, having such a nice, new, attractive building be placed in the middle of Squire Road will benefit not only the applicant, the city, but the surrounding neighbors and neighboring businesses as well. What is there at present is an old antiquated diner-style building that's been around for a number of years, at least 50. The style is out of date. The applicants have done as much as they can with the exterior while renovating completely the interior. The interior looks beautiful. So the renovations are needed. The addition of the second floor will allow the building to be converted from what looks like a diner or even an old sandwich shop into a nice, new, modernized restaurant that will be a focal point on Squire Road. The applicants have, with the application, there is a set of plans. These are initial plans that have been submitted. They have been through, and we'll go back through, obviously, site plan review. We are working closely with community development as well. All construction, obviously, will comply with local zoning, building, and health code regulations. The applicants have hired a local builder with a very good reputation in the city to oversee the construction. We're here for any questions, but the, again, the most important aspect is that we're giving this a good facelift and a good presentation for the city of Revere and the neighboring businesses.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. This will be going to the zoning subcommittee. At this time, I'm going to ask any councilors. Councilor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. This is right in the middle of Ward Three, in a very vital part of our community. I've met with the attorney, I met with the developer, I met with the community development group, I met with the owners. I couldn't say enough for all of them. Each and every one of them conduct themselves in a very professional manner. They're very understanding. I said some of the dislikes that I had for the area, and they absolutely agreed quickly. I look forward to this beautiful structure being built. It's going to be built by a first-class construction company, and I just think it's a good thing for Squire Road. We're doing the beautification of Squire Road over, and hopefully someday, there'll be groundbreaking across the street for a new hotel. This is going to only enhance the area, and I hope that these individuals get a lot of business from the new hotel and the area people, because I know for sure, they're trying to upgrade the area, and I just look forward to the day that they complete the work and we go in there as a unit and see how nice it is, but have a nice meal there and enjoying with these people into our community, because they're nothing but first class. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. Could I ask you a question, please? So what's abutting the property and what's in back of the property? Is there any residential property? Because I can't, I know where it is, but I just don't know what's in back of that.
Okay. If you were on Squire Road, there is Sunnyhurst, I don't know if it's still called Sunnyhurst, that's attached to Esposito's Bakery. There is this building, which years ago, most of us would remember, is Malzera's Beef. And then there's East Boston Savings Bank. The residences abut the entire strip of, in the back of Squire Road, they're all residences in back of every business, from the gas station to the Dunkin' Donuts, Stemp to Stern on Squire Road.
And the residents don't have any problems with this?
No, they're, like I indicated, they've been there for two years, they've done a lot of work inside. They haven't had any problems with neighbors, either neighbors in the back or neighboring businesses. Everybody is supportive. We haven't had any calls, complaints, or even questions of concerns. The application's been in with the city for a while, and with site plan review, and I haven't heard from anybody in a negative aspect at all.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Point of information to the council, I have not received one complaint.
Thank you for your point, Councilor. Councilor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Councilor, if I may.
Yes.
Are they going down into a basement?
No.
It's going to be at grade?
Yes, and only up. They're only adding above.
Second floor, and nothing on the roof?
Nothing on the roof, no roof deck.
No access for the public to go up in the roof?
No, no.
And handicap accessible, all the way up?
That'll be all in compliance.
Elevator?
I believe it's a lift, yeah, there'll be a lift. But we will be in compliance with all handicap regulations.
Including handicap parking?
Anything that's required.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to echo the sentiments of Councilor Guanasso. The whole team, this is what we love to see here. You know, last week, we were talking about shoddy workmanship in Beauchamp on the curbing and the flare-out and all that stuff that we've seen going on down there, but this week is completely opposite of that. We've got a great contractor, a great development team, working with good owners who I've had the chance to meet in the past, who just want to upgrade. This is the type of development, quite honestly, that I like to see in the city, because it's not development, it's redevelopment. You're taking an existing building and making that old building look new. And that's the type of development that I like to see in Revere. So for me, this is a tremendous project. It's going to add value to their business, and hopefully, they're going to be very successful and, you know, be able to showcase a building that's maybe more befitting to what their goal was when they opened up. And, you know, obviously, you know, you've put in all the documents together, you've dotted your i's and crossed your t's, as you always do, and as I say, we've got a great contractor that is looking and eager to get started there, so I am very happy to support this without any doubt in my mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. This is certainly an upgrade to the building. I'm looking forward to seeing this when it's finished. It'll certainly enhance the area, so needless to say, it's going to zoning, but I'm certainly going to support it.
Thank you.
The only thing I would worry about is structurally, and I know we get qualified people that are looking at the structure, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I had occasion to be at the, when they first opened there a year or so ago, and if what they're going to do upstairs on that is any indication of what they did below, it's a great, great project, and I will definitely support this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? All right, I will save my comments for a subcommittee. This will go to zoning.
Thank you.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on the application of National Grid to install a conduit from existing pole number 307 to 7 Belcher Street. Any proponents here this evening? Any proponents?
How you doing? Brendan Powell, electrical engineer for National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street in Malden. We are proposing to break approximately five feet of an asphalt sidewalk to be able to feed house number seven on Belcher Street, which is off Broad Sound Ave. Work will take approximately one day. We'll hire police details, and the sidewalk will be repaired to a better-than-existing state. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have an issue with this, as long as you put the sidewalk back. You said it's going to be better than it is now?
That's correct, and I believe, per my conversation with the owners, the city DPW director is making them repave all of Belcher Street as well.
Great.
It's a private way, but they're going to repave the whole thing.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just want to know, is this an emergency-type of job that you're on right now? Because I think the city council voted that, you know, because of the strike, that we would not be approving anything that was not of an emergency nature. Now, does this go, does this, you know...
Just a point of information, this is electric, not gas.
Oh, okay.
So we stopped any work for National Grid gas, but this is electric, so it's a different part of the company.
Okay, then I just wanted to be certain, so then I withdraw my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo?
Motion approved.
Madam President?
Any other councilors? Councilor Novoselsky?
Just a question, where is the conduit? Where it's going to end, where is the feed going from there? Overhead to another pole, or...
It will remain underground until it reaches the, until it reaches the side of the building.
But seven is all the way down the end of the street, right?
Right, but that portion of that conduit and cable is covered under an easement, as it being a private way, this homeowner owns up to the center line of that roadway.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Madam Clerk? On the petition of National Grid for 7 Belcher Street, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted. Public Safety Subcommittee Report, calendar item number seven. Motion presented by Council President Janino and Council Vice President McKenna that the mayor request the DPW to investigate the feasibility of using a more visible paint color for crosswalks. The Revere Beautification Committee and Beauchamp Improvement Committee would like to see a brighter color, such as red, to draw more attention to the crosswalks. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. This item will remain in committee.
Madam Clerk? And on calendar item number eight, for the Public Safety Subcommittee Report, motion presented by Councilors Morabito and Keefe that the mayor conduct a feasibility study to implement LED crosswalks throughout the city. Further, that grants should be looked at in order to launch the SMART program. Councilor Patch?
This motion was reported out favorably.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number nine is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report. Councilor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Subcommittee on Ways and Means met tonight. There was one item on the calendar, which was the acceptance of Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, as amended, which concerns other post-employment benefits and setting up a trust fund for that. Of the members present, it was voted unanimously to support it, and I would recommend it to the full council for adoption.
Madam Clerk? Shall the city council accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, as amended relative to OPEB? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the statute has been accepted. Calendar item number 10 is the Appointment Subcommittee Report. Councilor Guanasso?
Madam President, earlier this evening, the Appointment Subcommittee met. We had one item before us, Landmark Utilities and Site Excavation Corporation is a licensed drain layer. Although the attendee was not there, the landmark wasn't there, because of the reasoning of him working within the community, we asked that this be voted out favorably with the caveat that once work is processed, that his liability insurance, which terminates on October 31st, that that be renewed. If, in fact, that's not the case thereafter, we ask the city not to do any further business with them until that, in fact, has been activated. I ask you vote this out favorably this evening.
Madam Clerk? Shall the city council confirm the appointment of Landmark Utilities and Site Excavation Corp. is a licensed drain layer? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed. Calendar item number 11, communication from Edward Bamarci, 25 Beckford Ave., relative to barriers and debris at the McKinley School. Is Mr. Bamarci here? Place on file?
Madam President?
Oh, Counselor?
Before you place it on file, I just want to, I just want to comment on this communication. I know Mr. Bamarci has been asking about this, and I've actually investigated to try to find out who owns those Jersey barriers that are all lined up alongside his house. I don't know who has responsibility or ownership of them. The one thing, the one thing that I have done, and that he's asked, and I'm not sure it's not listed here in this communication, but he was having issues with the McKinley School and kind of kids hanging around and activities there that he wasn't comfortable with, so we did ask for directed patrols to be sent down there. I believe that has happened, but if we can, rather than just place on file, if we can maybe find out who has responsibility over those Jersey barriers and see why they're sitting there or if they might be moved, that might be, you know, like the way to go.
Superintendent Argenzio, do you have an answer for us?
Yeah, I could probably shed some light on that. The mayor's office, a week or 10 days ago, called me on that to try and help out this gentleman. Apparently, when the Hill School was built, they were used along Park Avenue, and the city, I guess, took possession of them, and they were moved there for lack of more suitable location, and they've just been stored there. So we are trying to find a suitable location for them, but in the meantime, if we can't do that in a fairly quick manner, we will at least move them to the other side of the McKinley School, away from the residence, as a temporary solution to it, but we are endeavoring to find a place to store them.
That's great. Good news.
Thank you, Superintendent. Councilor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. Echoing Councilor Rizzo's comments, I have not spoken to Mr. Bamarci, but I will be reaching out to him in regards to his letter, because, you know, I feel his frustration, and I hope that we can have the DPW assist us with removing these, but also adding to the cleaning of the area more often. It's something that I obviously deal with firsthand and have done often, and the same with the directed patrols, typically on Friday nights, or in the nights of a lot of gathering, especially in the summer, but it has gotten a lot better this year, so I appreciate the police enforcement. But I'll definitely address Mr. Bamarci myself and try and get to some of the bottom of this. Thank you.
Any other councilors? So it seems as if the DPW is working on this issue to be resolved. I'm not sure what the will of the council is in terms of... Place on file? Onto motions. Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Rizzo that the mayor inform the city council as to the status of the RFP process for road and prevention and road and control utilizing the $150,000 allocated by the city council in June of 2018. Councilor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. You know, as we all know, we authorized in the FY '19 budget $150,000 for road and control, and I know that in my conversations with Superintendent Argenzio, he's been dispatching people whenever possible to locations that are having issues, and, you know, sad to report, there are still a lot of people that are having issues with road and infestation. One of the things I think that's handcuffing our Public Works Department and the way to proceed is that it is in the RFP process. At least it was last time I checked. I just wanted an update and a status as to when that process will be completed and when these contracts will be awarded, so that, you know, he doesn't have to be put in a position that if I call, or if one of us calls and says, "Can you go down and look at this location?", he doesn't actually have the funding available, but he kind of does it on good faith. It's really not the way we should be doing it, although he's done a great job in being helpful that way, but I just want to know when this is going to actually all be said and done, so he's got the funding at his disposal, so...
Thank you, Councilor. Superintendent?
Yes, I can update the council on that. About 10 days ago, we received the proposals from the different pest control companies. I believe we looked through about seven of them. We have settled on two. B&amp;B Pest Control, which will be doing the west side of Broadway, and Weaver Pest Control, which will be doing the east side of Broadway. We are probably signing a contract within the next couple of days.[1711.33] We are probably signing a contract within the next couple of days. All the calls will be routed through the 311 system. These pest controls companies will be dispatched. They will do an initial inspection of the property. If burrows are found, they will use one of several methods to treat the burrows. If there aren't burrows and there's evidence of rat activity, they will bait those properties. They will continue to visit those properties two to three times to make sure that the situation has been taken care of. The ISD office will be involved in this. The pest control companies have been instructed that when they go out to inspect these properties, if they find code violations, pour trash disposal, or some other situation that might be adding to the rat problem, that will be rerouted to ISD and an inspector will go out to address it. Also, both companies have been given a list of public properties on either side of Broadway, parks, playgrounds, islands, memorials, open lots that the city owns, and those will be inspected periodically through the process until the end of the fiscal year, and if necessary, those areas will be treated.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Superintendent. Much appreciated, and so, so the route you said will be 311, or can we still call, you know, should we call, you know?
311 is now set up to dispatch these calls, kind of take the pressure off a little bit of the ISD department, but the ISD will certainly be called in if code violations are found that are exacerbating the program or the problem with the rats.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith and Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. No, thank you, Mr. Argenzio. Can I just ask, and may I add, that we get updated, as the council gets updated possibly monthly, on the progress of this program? Just, it doesn't seem like something that's going to go away anytime soon, but I think it would be best to have updates, and I'm not necessarily saying you have to come up every month to explain it, or the Board of Health maybe, but even just an email with some data to let us know how the program is working and the status of where we're at.
I'm sure the 311 office will disseminate, you know, once a month, whatever places these companies went, and I don't think that'll be a problem.
Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly have just a couple of problem areas, namely the Housing Authority and Coolidge Constitution and that particular area. There were invisibility, there were tons of burrows there, and I'm not certain that all those have been taken care of. I've been assured by the Housing Authority they have, but I don't know firsthand if they have, and there's still rodent activity occurring as we speak. So I would like some attention focused on that, because some of the individuals there don't know exactly where to call, who to call, what to do. They call the Housing Authority, does the Housing Authority call us? We certainly have an obligation, because it's in the city of Revere, no matter whose authority is in charge over there, for us to rid the problem within our community. And what it also affects is lower end of Mountain Ave. I have some complaints there of quite a bit of rodent activity, and these folks are just reluctant to go full with these complaints, but I speak on their behalf because they really want some help there, and I can give addresses to anybody. I called them in, but I think it's back of the house, it's front, it's just a little bit of a problem going on there, and some attention has to be given to that area.
Well, the Housing Authority is its own entity, and we don't service them with this program, but consequently, one of the contractors, B&amp;B, also has the contract with the Housing Authority, and we've also, we've spoken to them, and they said that the Housing Authority has definitely stepped up their, stepped up their game with addressing.
You know, they tell me that, but there's still activity, so, you know, they also told me they were going to do some repair, and they haven't done that either, so, you know, I'm trying to be as friendly to them as possible because I know I'm a hands-in with them, because they, we won't really have the direct overhaul of them and oversight of them, so I think we need some help in that area. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Paul, two things. Folks still have to sign a waiver for them to get on their property?
Yes, if the initial inspection is done and a treatment is necessary, yes, a waiver is definitely required. You can download, download those off the city website. The pest control people have them, so, yes, you definitely need to do that before they'll do any kind of...
Good. That was just to let the phone...
Yes.
Because there was no indication before, but I knew it was in the first round. The second item I want to bring is, it's a strange situation down in Elliott Road. The very dead end of Elliott along the MBTA tracks, there's an old pump station shell, and very, very active, and nobody knows who owns it, whether it's housing or was from the old Garfield School, so is, and it's very, very active with raccoons and skunks and rats, and so if we can maybe get some kind of solution, I have put in a request that that shack or the brick shack that's there be removed and the hole be covered or filled in, so.
Okay, well, I'll certainly try to get to the bottom of it to see who owns it, but in the meantime, I'm sure we can send a pest control company down to address it.
Thank you.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. Paul, in the past, people have called 311, and then I guess 311 calls Inspection Services. And before you know it, you know, seven or eight days has gone by, and people that are still seeing the rats in their backyard, and in some cases, somebody goes out there and looks for the burrows, and they don't find any burrows on my property, but I'm still seeing the rats because they're coming from two or three houses down the street where there are burrows. That's number one. Number two, I know we have to have releases signed, so now is, are they not still, are they still coming up to Inspection Services to sign the release, or will the contractor who goes out there finds a burrow or several burrows? Will he have the release on him so that the homeowner can sign that release, and then he can perhaps do his work while he's out there?
Yes, positively.
Because I think, I don't think that's happened in the past, and I think people that have called me, and maybe more myself than some other councilors, because I'm on, I'm right on the marsh most of my ward. It's in an area bordered on the ocean on one side, the marsh and the river, so it's become a problem. So what, I guess what I'm hearing now is that if somebody calls 311 tomorrow, they will call the person assigned to that area?
Yes.
They will go out there within, what would you say a reasonable time would be? Couple of days?
I believe we, when we talked with the companies, 72 hours.
Okay, so they'll go out there within 72 hours, person will sign the release, and then they'll bait the area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, they'll look for rodent activity if you're...
Which would be burrows, right?
Which would be burrows, or rats that run through your property usually take the same route, and there's droppings and what have you, so they will probably put a bait station at that point.
Okay. You say a bait station. Are we finding that a bait station has been adequate in the past, or that depending on the infestation?
The pest control companies, we feel, will know best. Obviously, if they see a ton of activity, then they'll...
So they're not going to be limited to one bait station?
No, no, absolutely not. Whatever's needed in that...
They have in the past, and that's been part of the problem, I think. And now, my next question is, will they go back to that address at some point and...
Two to three times.
And service that bait station?
Yes, they will.
To make sure that, you know, it's working?
Positively, and if there's burrows, they'll treat them, fill them up. If they go back and see that they've been redug, they'll re-treat.
Okay.
So it's not just going to be a one-shot deal or anything. They'll be visiting two to three times.
That answers my question. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Hey, handsome. How are you, Paul?
Good, Judge, thank you.
Couple of questions. How much money have we extracted from the funding that we had provided the mayor?
$150,000, $100 on the water supply side and 50 on the DPW side?
Correct.
We haven't used any of that money yet. That's going right towards this program.
Why? I mean, have we not? Because I'll be honest with you, I'm getting the same level of complaints that I got before. It seems like we're kind of spinning our wheels in one place, because unfortunately, I believe that the level of rodents haven't changed, and by you telling me, that kind of scares me, that we haven't had a full frontal effort in the sense of the economics of it.
Prior to July 1st, we had that initial push out there, and we spent about $40,000. Once July 1st rolled around and money was appropriated, we had to go through this RFP process because the cost of this...
Yeah, you know, the next time I'm going to ask the mayor to forego the RFP process because this is an emergency situation, it's a safety issue regarding not only the quality of life, but also for the health of our people, and I believe in this particular instance, like in other instances in which there's an emergency, we can forego that process under 30B. More importantly, it just seems like we haven't done enough.
Well, we have, we haven't completely abandoned the rodent program. The ISD with their program that they had for years was still active.
Right, and that was, no offense, Paul, but that's limited. I mean, I still have the same amount of people complaining about issues down on Philomena, down on Goldie, down on Vane, down on Reservoir, down on Fennel, in particular, down by 300. It's infested, it's like, it's like, one day I went down there with the person, and he says, "Watch." He threw a rock, rats scattered all around. I mean, and that hasn't changed in two months, so to me, the, you know, I use that as the level, you know what I mean? And again, this is an ongoing issue. We've got construction, I'm not blaming anybody, this is just, you know, when you storm, I guess to use the Normandy ideal, they knew that they were going to have attrition of troops, and so when you're storming that type of an issue, you have to put more troops towards it. I don't think that we had enough troops to catch all these rodents, so to speak. I mean, even down on Beach, on Kimball, I mean, I can go through the list of streets in which people have complained, especially down over by Kelly Green, that area, it's just, you know, people are inundated with these things.
Oh, no, I agree with you, Counselor, and, you know, in a week or so, we're going to have a full frontal effort, and hopefully we'll...
The other thing is, people are concerned about the type of bait used because of the secondary effect on, you know, pets, in particular cats, because they're smaller beings, and when they unfortunately get into a mouse, that that type of disease that's within the, or shall I say the, the, I don't want to say medicine, but the, whatever it's killing it, the poison, thank you, is going to poison the cat. Is there a way that we can, I mean, mediate that other than telling people, "You've got to keep your cat in the house"?
Well, I mean, they're trying to do the most easiest method possible. When they go to the burrows, they're going to try to use dry ice or carbon monoxide. They might have to use poison. They're going to try to use the least, most economically, not economically, but environmentally friendly...
Feasible, right.
An environmentally friendly approach first, but unfortunately, they will have to be, some poison has to be put out. The bait boxes are designed so cats and dogs can't get into them. That's part of the reason for the waiver, so make people aware that, you know, you need to keep your cats...
And what about Revere Housing? Who's taking control of that?
So, Counselor, this is on the RFP. If we want to put it into committee and talk more about specific rat problems and the program in place, but this is about the financial end of it, so if there are questions pertaining to the RFP, we can go into that. If you'd like to talk about the rat program...
Well, the RFP is only, the RFP is only directed by the mayor in order to attain a particular service. This is telling the person that's going to providing the measure as to where I find the problem. I mean, he's not going to know entirely everything unless we tell him.
Correct, so we can put it into committee where we can go into it more, but I don't see, we're kind of running around in circles tonight. We can keep asking questions back and forth, but we're not really getting anywhere.
All right, I mean, personally, Revere Housing has a major issue.
The Housing Authority is their own entity. They are addressing it. Like I said, the B&amp;B also has their contract, and they've told us that they have increased their patrolling of the Housing Authority, and I can't answer for them.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Counselor Powers?
I just have one question, and I think it's very important to the people that may be at home watching the program. Were purchasing new barrels?
Yes, we, I believe that's a little further on the agenda. I was going to speak about that also.
My question was, when will they be coming in, and how many will each unit be allocated? If it's a single-family house, obviously one, if it's a two-family house, do they get two? And I can, I can wait till you address that later on. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, well, we'll go into that a little more later. I understand that there are more questions that councilors may have, and I don't want to stifle them in any sense, and I think that, again, the rat problem is citywide, it's a big problem that we're dealing with. I like Counselor Keith's idea of having a monthly update, so I think it's appropriate to put this in committee so we can continue to talk about it, so I'm going to put it into Public Works.
Madam President, just a point of information.
Counselor?
If the motion is referring to the RFP, and we already have the answer on it, you know, and this other issue is a separate item, I would think you need a separate motion to talk about the rodent problem and place this one on file where we already have an answer.
Okay.
Procedure-wise.
So we'll place this motion on file, and then I'll make a verbal motion at this time to have a monthly meeting of the Public Works Committee to discuss the rodent problem and solutions. Sound good?
Sure. Madam President, unless you have anything further you wanted to add to that, it's only, we have one more, you know, calendar item number 13, then it's 14, 15. I have some things I'd like to say on 14, so out of respect for the superintendent who's here, can we suspend rules and take up calendar item number 15 about the barrels, and then go back to calendar item number 14, because I have some, some things I really want to talk about with that, if that's okay?
Sure. Can we vote on my motion I have on the floor first?
Oh, sure.
So on the motion to have the monthly meeting of the Public Works Committee to discuss the rat problems and solutions, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. On suspension of rules, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item 15, Madam Clerk? Motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor inform the City Council the status of the new barrel program, a timeline for implementation, and a source of funding to execute the purchases. Counselor Rizzo?
Motion pretty much speaks for itself, Superintendent. Do you have any answers?
Yes, the cost of the barrels is approximately, well, it's $902,000, spread out over three fiscal year, or 36-month equal payments. In the operating budget this year, there is enough, I think for eight months of payments. The program is scheduled to start on October 15th. We have over 16,000 barrels that we'll be delivering, one per household, two family you get two, three family you get three. There will probably five or six days prior to those going out, you'll get an informational pamphlet in the mail explaining the whole program. We think this is going to be a big help to the rodent problem, having everybody with a closed bin. We're also going to try to address recycling contamination in the brochure to try to tighten up that program a little bit. So everything should start October 15th, and we're thinking about a three-week period that we're going to be using for distribution.
Through you, Madam President, I, you know, this really wasn't part of the motion, but it has to do with barrels, so safe to say, and by the way, I think it's an excellent idea, you know, get the trash bags off the street and, you know, put lid, you know, covered barrels. I think it makes perfect sense, but, you know, my question is, if one barrel isn't enough for some people, they will have options, or, you know, how's that going to work?
Yes, we are coming to some conclusions on that.
Like Christmas time, for example, let's say Christmas time, you don't have enough, you know, how's that going to work for people?
People will be afforded the opportunity to purchase a second barrel if they feel as though they can't get their trash in one barrel. Part of this program is to try and start get everybody with the idea of trying to restrict the amount of trash they're throwing up to try to control the cost. Other cities and towns, most of them do something, pay as you throw a trash fee. The city certainly wants to try to avoid that. So you will have the opportunity to purchase a second barrel. We are trying to enter into some discussions, maybe the week after Christmas, there might be like a free week. That hasn't been decided yet. Some things are being thrown around and discussed, and we should be having some conclusions with, in the next week or 10 days. The cost of the extra barrel, that's still, we're still in discussions on that. I know, for instance, Everett, they sell an extra barrel for $150, and they charge the homeowner $150 every year after that. I don't think that's the route we're taking. We're thinking about a one-time charge. So we're trying to control the amount of trash people throw out and control the rodent problem at the same time.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Mr. Argenzio. I think this is a great program, and I'm excited to see it happen, but there are some residents that have been doing the right thing all along and obviously have purchased recently probably some nice, heavy-duty closed-lid barrels. What would they do with those barrels?
Again, we're struggling with that. We may offer an opportunity for us to pick them up if they want to dispose of them, or they can keep them for their yard waste or other things, but we're only looking to pick up city-sanctioned barrels. They'll be stamped with the city seal, just like the recycling barrels.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Otteno?
Thank you. Perhaps you can pass this on to the mayor. Figuring 16,000 barrels, I did the math, just about $90 a barrel, maybe, give or take, and considering what they do in other communities, perhaps those barrels that Counselor O'Keefe is talking about, excuse me, Keefe is talking about. With that said, perhaps those barrels that we're going to be taking, we can actually take them and dispose of them and give an extra barrel to the people. 10%, I figure is probably, what, another 90,000? Maybe 15% is probably closer to another 100,005, what have you. It's a small amount of money that we can do for people that really, you know, pay enough in taxes. We've got enough in the rainy day fund in order to facilitate that. I think that's something that most of the councils up here could consider as putting away in a separate fund for the DPW, specifically earmarked for those people who wish to get second barrels. It's a very simple relief that we can provide people who are actually doing the right thing, and I just hope you consider it when you're talking about yourselves.
Certainly will. And we're also, we realize we'll be, whatever costs we're going to be passed on with a second barrel purchase, consideration for senior citizens and reducing the price for seniors.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna? No? Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to throw this out there for you, Paul. Obviously, you're involved in these discussions, and I think one of the, probably one of the most important things we can do in addition to purchasing these barrels, which is a great idea, is to make sure that the dumpsters throughout the city are closed and our inspectional service department monitors that in a positive manner. Because if you're putting 20 or 30 new barrels on a street, and there's a restaurant down the street and they got a dumpster, it's open all the time, well, we're not solving the problem. Thank you.
That's 100% correct. And also, I failed to mention that with this 900,000, the trash trucks will be outfitted with software, and there'll be an RFD reader on every barrel. So, as these trash trucks go around and they see a violation, maybe the cover's open or there's extra trash, the driver will be able to press a button that will go into a database, and then a letter will be mailed out to the homeowner, warning them that they're in violation or they're doing something that is inappropriate.
That sounds fine. My main concern was also for dumpsters also. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Novoski?
Thank you, Madam President. Paul, size of the...
65-gallon. The same size as your...
64, 65-gallon ones. Okay, and so, again, I'm just, I know I'm repeating, but they will not take the ones you have now. You're stuck with them, unless something happens.
Well, we can find another use, or maybe we can try and find a market to recycle them. We're talking about maybe mailing out a sticker that you could put on your old barrel, and we'll take that for free. Those things are still trying to be worked out. There's a million questions that come up that, you know, we're trying to iron out and get an answer for all of them.
Good. I think it's a great program. Thank you.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Paul, it's in the ordinance, the rat-proof bags. We're going to have to change...
Yes, that...
That's not going to be allowed, right?
No.
Put those out.
No, that will also, in this whole process, the ordinance will be changed, you know, to reflect that, that no trash bags, even the rodent-proof ones, will be on the ground. Everything needs to be in these enclosed barrels.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Otteno?
Hi, Paul. What's the tipping fee for trash versus recyclable?
Well, the trash at Wheeler Breeder right now, I believe, is $70.30 a ton. The recycling has been volatile. Last August, it was break-even, weren't paying anything. In June, I believe, it was $93 a ton. It has now started, so recycling has become more expensive to throw away than trash. Over the last couple of months, the market has changed, and that's coming down. It looks like it's in like the upper 70s, but it's been fluctuating wildly.
So, there is no benefit to recycle at this point? Economically?
Economically, today, no. China has backed out of taking most of the recycling. There are some indications in talks with these recycling facilities that other countries may be coming on board.
Japan, Indonesia.
Yes, and so, it has brought down the price, you know, $15, $20 in a matter of a couple of months. So, it's wildly volatile.
Thank you.
Counselor Zimburo?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the point is made here that there's always consequences for our actions, you know. I've been here long enough to remember when we were the first community to have curbside recycling, and it was great. And, you know, we're all doing the great thing for the environment, and everything was great. Now, all of a sudden, we're paying more money to recycle than we ought to get rid of trash. So, something's upside down. It's not a good situation. Just back to my point that I always make up here, there's consequences for every action, and there's got to be a middle ground here somewhere. Let's hope we find it soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. At this time, we'll return to the regular order of business. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item 14.
Motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor notify RCN and their contractors operating in the city of Revere, reminding them of OSHA rules and standards. Bucket trucks have been reported being driven with employees up in the bucket, creating a dangerous situation for both the employees and residents should the truck ever flip and land on unsuspecting people, property, or power lines.
Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Obviously, it's a very dangerous situation, and I'm not sure if these are RCN employees or if they're contractors, but they need to be notified because it's very dangerous, not just for the person who's up in the bucket, but as it states in the motion, if the truck ever tips and it lands on someone or someone's property or lands on power lines and then rips down poles, that can cause some real problems for residents. So, that should just be what's being adhered to. Apparently, it's not, and so, I'd like RCN to be notified. And actually, Madam President, I had put a motion in six, seven, eight months ago about an update, a status on the contract with RCN, because clearly, you know, it's great to have options with respect to cable and especially fiber. And the thing with RCN, they have to build out communities when they come in. So, you know, there's been conversations going back to Mary Ann Bracino about trying to get an alternative provider and, you know, similar to FiOS and Comcast. And so, you know, it's great that they've decided to come in, build out the community, and give more choice to what we have now, as I say, with Comcast and the Dish. And a lot of people today are actually streaming with Netflix and Hulu and other services like that. But no doubt, the more choice we have, the better it's going to be for the consumers. So, it's a good thing. But I've got so many questions, Madam President, that I wanted to ask if they'd just come up and talk about the contract that we've signed with RCN. I'd like to know about senior discounts. I want to know about, you know, a center similar to what we have with Comcast, if somebody needs to go down and get a box. Right now, the only one I'm aware of is Arlington. I mean, I don't want our residents to have to go to Arlington if they do decide to sign up with RCN to change out a box, you know? Are they going to invest in our community? Local access, you know, we've got Comcast here now. Will RCN also give our residents, you know, a chance to watch local access TV, similar to Revere TV, or maybe Revere TV itself? So, there's just so many questions that I have, and I really wish, I mean, I've tried to follow up on as many motions I can. There's just so many that have never been responded to that I'm starting to lose track. But, you know, I think it's important that if we can get somebody up here from the administration to talk about what the contract is and let the council ask questions about this new franchise agreement so that, you know, we know what we can tell people once RCN rolls out the product. We know they're building out the community. When do they go online? What's the anticipated launch date? When are pe... You know, they're going to have people presumably going door-to-door. How, you know, we just had somebody, as a result of the gas explosions in the Merrimack Valley, I had a poor woman at the Golden Gala come over to me, elderly woman, that said two representatives from the gas company came out, said they needed to get in her basement. And she's an elderly woman, she let them in, and thank God, it was all legit and, but, you know, do they, you know, like, people need identification when they show up at somebody's doorstep. And, you know, these are things I really wanted to talk about if we can get some information about this new agreement. So, for now, this motion, Madam President, talks about the safety and the way they're operating and wiring out the community, and that is what I'd like voted on tonight. But if we could, or if I could amend it, that somebody, a representative from the administration who handled the negotiations, come up and answer some questions, you know, so that we have an understanding prior to launch, you know, what we can tell residents what to expect. I think that's very important from the perspective of a city councilor, to have advanced knowledge before that actually gets out there to the public. So, I'd like to amend it with, you know, to have somebody come up and explain it. And maybe even going forward, we have this monthly meeting with all the utilities. RCN, I think, I believe, should be included in that, because they'll be just as involved with the removal of lines on poles when the time comes. So, we'll need to get them in the loop when it comes to, you know, Comcast and National Grid and Verizon. They're going to need to be part of that team that comes up here every month and informs the city council what's going on. So, that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoski?
Thank you, Madam President. I have, you know, honestly, through Counsel Rizzo, I haven't seen any RCN trucks down in my neighborhood, you know? And so, I don't know what's going on with that, but this is a dangerous situation, and it should be addressed. As far as the second part of the motion, one of my constituents called me and said they called RCN, and they were told, "Oh, they're not coming down to this part of the city." Excuse me. So, you know, I'd like to get an answer on that also. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Both to Counselor Rizzo and to Counselor Novoski. The RCN contract, as you know, has been signed. RCN has begun its process of stringing their fiber across the city. This process will take, before the entire city has RCN available to it, it will take somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to nine months, possibly up to a year, depending on how the winter runs, as they're moving from sort of the southeastern part of the city to the northwestern part of the city. That's how they're going across the city. In terms of the questions that Counselor Rizzo has, if he wants to itemize them, I could, I don't know, I don't have the answers to all of those right off the top of my head. I do know that the RCN product will be similar to the Comcast product. For example, Revere TV would be on it. As a matter of fact, RCN is providing three HD stations to the city as well. But if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I just don't know all the answers off the top of my head.
Well, I know, yeah, I mean, I know Counselor Otteno has some questions, but, I mean, for me, I have a series of questions. I don't know that we want to go into them right now, but, you know, I would like, at some point, someone to respond to the motion that I put in, like I say, many months ago, to come up and talk about the RCN franchise agreement, if that's going to be possible. So, maybe if you could go back, Bob, and like, check back on all my motions and find the one that said, "Can someone come up and talk about RCN"? We can get it on the calendar. I mean, I think right now would be, number one, going off of what the motion really is, but I just have a series of concerns that I wanted to talk about.
Right. And what would be helpful, and I'll take a look and see what those motions are, the more specificity in what the questions are, because the contract, as you imagine, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 pages long. But depending on what specific questions you have, if we have a little bit of a heads-up, then I can come up, I suspect it will be myself that comes up and answers the question. I'll have a much clearer answer for you if I know ahead of time what you're looking for. So, I'll take a look at those motions. If they have any questions, I'll follow up.
Yeah, there's, you know, like I say, there's a, you know, the 60-page contract would translate into about 60 pages of questions, because I just wanted to get some clarification. But that's okay. If you can look at the motion, we can get it on the calendar, that you come back up, and I'll try to email you in advance some of the questions I have.
Yeah, that's fine. If I have any questions, I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Madam President, a point of information for me.
State your point, Counselor.
Madam President, this particular item is very complicated, and may I suggest that we hold off and have a committee at a hall to discuss, because this is going to be, it's going to be an hour-long issue. And I think we ought to put it in committee and...
I have two points on this. I think it's important that we vote on Counselor Rizzo's motion tonight, because it's regarding OSHA and the trucks and safety. I think the trucks and the contract are two separate issues. So, I think that we should vote on the motion this evening about OSHA and the safety. I think that we should put in a substitute or an additional motion to put it into committee so that we can get deeper into the contract. So, I think we should keep them separate. So, let's focus on the safety and the OSHA rules, and then we will put a separate motion in to go into committee. But we'll still allow conversation on this. I know Counselor McKenna wants to speak, followed by Counselor Otteno.
Thank you, Madam President. Robert, Counselor Novoski said that some of the residents were concerned because RCN said they weren't going to come into certain areas. Is this citywide?
Yeah, it's citywide. I don't know where anybody got that information. The information they may have gotten, and perhaps misconstrued, was that RCN is beginning in one section of the city and moving across the city. But it is a citywide program. Under their contract, they're obligated to provide, as Comcast is, to provide service to 100% of the residents in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Otteno?
This will be simple. Could we have a copy of the contract of the actual performance clause? That's the most important part.
Give you a copy of the whole contract.
Yeah, that'll be even better. And that way, we have something to read before you come up, and we can make educated comments based upon what you have.
Right. And the contract, by the way, just, and we'll gladly provide it, but it is available online under the, it's the Mass Cable TV Regulation Authority, whatever the state...
Send me a link, it'll be easier. That way, I can forward it to the rest of the councils.
It might be easier to send you the contract itself, but I'll send it to you.
Counselor Zimburo?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, for the record, I'm very happy about this, that we finally have competition. I think that perhaps we should be a little more proactive about letting people know the good news, that we're going to have competition in the city. I've had several seniors ask me that they heard that RCN was coming to the city, and to be honest with you, I didn't know the answer. Shame on me.
Yeah, it was announced...
I think it should be, I think we should do a better job.
Well, RCN has been reluctant to publicize it until they were really ready to market it. Now, they're going to begin their marketing within the next couple of weeks, if they haven't started that already.
That's fine. If they're going to do that, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Bob, my problem with RCN is I've witnessed what Counselor Rizzo was saying about them riding around in the bucket, and I often see them, and they don't have any police details working with them. And I know, back when I was in the police department, when RCN was doing some of them, they had to take Revere over there. We went over there to do details for RCN. It looks like, I really haven't seen one truck with a detail since they've been working. I mean, I haven't, of course, I haven't seen all, you know, all the workplaces, but I was wondering if you could just check and see for public safety reasons why they, they're not using a detail with every truck?
Yeah, that, and that goes in hand-in-hand with safety concerns the Counselor Rizzo's motion brings up.
Right. Also, I believe these are, most of these trucks are contractors, don't work for RCN.
That's correct.
That's the way it was in some of them anyways.
Seeing as there are no other counselors, we'll take up Counselor Rizzo's motion. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. And at this time, I'll put in a verbal motion that the city council committee of the hall And at this time, I'll put in a verbal motion that the city council committee of the hall meet prior to a meeting of the full body at 6:00 PM to discuss the contract with RCN, so the clerk and myself can communicate with the mayor's office to come up with a date that you can perhaps provide the council with the contract, and then we'll set up a time like a half hour to an hour before a meeting that we can review any questions, like a half hour period.
Madam President?
Councilor.
With all due respect, it'd be kind of pointless to move forward with any meeting unless we have the contract first so that we can digest it.
Correct.
When can we have that contract certain?
That's why I said we need it a week or so prior to it.
Tomorrow? All right, so I'll expect it tomorrow or the day after. Sure thing.
So, anticipate having the contract this week so that we can set up a subsequent meeting to review any questions that we may have. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item 16.
Motion presented by Councilor Rizzo, that the mayor instruct Inspeccional Services and Public Works to monitor and remove signs from public telephone poles and other public property offering private services.
Councilor Rizzo.
Motion basically speaks for itself. There's too many signs hanging on poles, "I buy houses cash," and all this stuff. It just litters up the city, and it drives me crazy when I see it, so hopefully we can pay more attention to that and rip them down when we see them.
Councilor Ganaso.
Can you have a friendly addendum to that, that also in the median strips of our community?
Councilor Rizzo, Councilor...
Let me authorize...
Councilor Ganaso is asking to amend it to include signs on median strips? Is that okay?
No.
Okay. Any councilors? On the motion as amended, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Councilor Patch, that the mayor request the traffic commission to investigate the feasibility of installing safety measures, including but not limited to stop signs or traffic lights at the intersection of Malden Street and New Hall Street. This is a very dangerous intersection for students and other pedestrians. Further, that an additional crossing guard be stationed at Charger Street and North Avenue to enable students to cross Malden Street safely at this location.
Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I received a call from a mother, whose children go to the, the Willand School, and stated how it's, it's a problem crossing that intersection, and I explained to her that I've, over the 11 years, I've probably put this, this motion or a similar motion in about three times. We all know, especially, I don't have to tell you, you live right down the street, but the, I mean, the island's been wiped out, even when, during an election, when you're holding a sign out there, you see accidents, and you see, it's just, it's just a, a bad situation. And I'm just hoping for, that it's about time that they really think it out and set up a, a design, that people aren't trying to go, nobody stops for anybody today anyway, so, I mean, you gotta either put the stop signs or a traffic light there, and also that, the second part of the motion, the crossing guard, there's no way for a child to safely cross from, like, Benny's Market across the Charger Street. So, I would like that. Thank you.
Any other councilors? If I may briefly, this is a great, great motion, Councilor Patch. It's around the corner from my house, and it's a terrible intersection, people coming in from out of town, often if you're coming from Broadway towards Washington Ave, like in that direction. A lot of people don't realize that there's oncoming traffic at the other way, and people are coming around that corner, and cars just go so fast. It's also really confusing when, of course, there's school time or heavy traffic, but as you mentioned, it's funny that you say this, but during our years campaigning, that's often a spot where people stand and hold signs, and I don't think you ever realize the number of traffic problems in the city until you stand there for an hour and stare at them when you're holding signs. So, I think it's a great motion. It's a very dangerous intersection, and maybe we can put some bright crosswalks in there.
One more thing? Also, I, I would like, when it does go to Traffic Commission, if, you know, that I get a notice, so I know there's some mothers that want to go to the Traffic Commission meeting. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Councilor Keefe, that the mayor, that the mayor be requested to provide an update on the installation of security cameras at Harry Del Rosso Stadium.
Councilor Keefe.
Thank you, Madam President. I have received word that there's some work that's gonna be done, but this has been something that I've been asking for, for a little while, and I understand that there's some wiring that needs to be taken care of, but just, just wanted to bring this up, bring, again, to put a little bit more pressure. I just, Harry Del Rosso Stadium's obviously a heavily-used public facility. It's, it's a beautiful stadium, it's a very large investment to, the city made, and, and, like I said, it's one of our number-one amenities. I want to keep it that way, and I think security cameras will help protect that asset as a community, and also just a reminder that, you know, and I'm a fan of having security cameras throughout the city. There was an incident at Witsaugus High School last month, and it was in regards to football. I don't want to get into the details of it, but they were able to go back and look at the footage to help rectify the situation and get to the truth of what had happened on the field, which was nice, and they had, they had the cameras on the field, and they were able to see that. I think that places like Harry Del Rosso Stadium, places like St. Mary's Ballpark, these are, these are, like I said, assets to our city, and we should have access to cameras so we can make sure that we protect those assets and, and the ongoings of what's happening there. Thank you.
Councilor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I agree with Councilor Keefe. We were talking about that during the construction of the stadium, how they were gonna handle it through the school department over at Hill School, and, and, you know, I'm surprised that's, what, three years now that we've been talking about it? And I know there's funding still available from the bonds for the stadium and the school, so, you know, I am kind of disappointed that they're not up yet, but I just want to bring up, since we're talking about Harry Del Rosso Stadium, when they built the press box, there was a serious flaw in the, that I've been trying to get corrected for the last two-and-a-half years, and we'd like to get the PA system control box relocated, because it's, everybody keeps banging their head, and it's a dangerous situation in this, in the press box. So, I would hope that we can get the mayor to have that control box relocated to the back of the booth, so we can make that an addendum to the motion.
Councilor Patch?
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a great motion, Councilor Keefe. I believe we had it in, a couple of years ago, and, and I wish you, you put St. Mary's in there also. I think the last motion we had, it had the stadium in St. Mary's, because they had problems of kids drinking and doing drugs in the dugouts and the, and what have you at night. People use it for walkway now, and the same with the stadium. It's used, it's used constantly, so. We spent so much money building these places, and we want to keep them nice, so, and we were promised the cameras, like, yes, three, about three or four years ago, and we haven't, we haven't seen them yet. Thank you.
Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Keefe's motion. These cameras were part of the overall implementation of the stadium. You know, most of us might remember, we received a $2.72 million grant, and then the city only had to borrow $5.5 million in order to complete that project, which is a tremendous asset to the city, and we've always believed that the cameras were gonna play a vital role in maintaining the security of what happens there and how we can maintain that asset. And I, I can't for the life of me understand why, why the cameras are not online and active right now. You know, it's, it doesn't take that long to set up a camera system, for sure. And somebody else had made a, a suggestion, and I totally agree about cameras down at St. Mary's Ballfields.
Yep.
I think that makes perfect sense, you know, again, because of safety and security, and, you know, so hopefully this is something, it's an easy fix. There is money there, certainly sitting there, you know, that, you know, it's, I'm sure one of those accounts that was identified during the audit, there's just leftover money, as Councilor Nowosowski said, from the Hill School, leftover money sitting there from the, you know, from the stadium. I would imagine there's probably still money sitting there from the St. Mary's Ballfields, because they, we don't, we still don't have a concession stand there, and that was all factored into the initial project. So, you know, there are, there is funding available, it just needs to be implemented, and hopefully that can happen sooner than later. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you. Sorry about the phone call, folks. That said, we had asked for it again two years ago and a year recently, in which Captain Gado was before us, and we asked that we had those cameras put in place, as there were problems down in the park. In particular, we were talking about and complaining about the fact that people were unfortunately shooting up in certain parks, and that it would act as a deterrent in other parks if we had asked for those cameras to be put elsewhere besides the park in, at McKinley. Frankly, we have enough money in our rainy day account to do that in many other parks, but this is something that was earmarked four years ago through the bonding process, and I just want to know why it hasn't been done yet. And if the money isn't there for that, then perhaps we can go into the rainy day fund and get it and, and appropriate a, you know, proportionally. But besides that park, and it was in reference to later on, other parks, but we should also consider other parks as well, because the more cameras that we have in the city, in particular those parks, the safer they're going to be for everybody. Thank you.
Any other councilors? On the motion as amended to include the press box, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Councilor Keefe, that the mayor request the traffic commission to establish restrictions for vehicles being used to hold scrap metal and garbage overnight on city streets. Currently, many of these vehicles are skirting commercial vehicle licenses and operating businesses on the public roadways.
Councilor Keefe.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I put down the traffic commission, but I'm not, I'm not sure. This may need to go to some form of an ordinance change, and I, I gave all the councilors pictures, but what this is, what I'm getting at is, and if you, it's tough to see these pictures, but on our, on our city streets in our neighborhoods, and I know it's in every neighborhood, not just in Ward 4, but this happens to be, believe it or not, right on Mount Ave, there's, there's, there's vehicles, people operating as scrap metal or junk removal vehicles, and they're obviously not licensed businesses, they're, they're not commercially registered vehicles either. They're parking on our roadways every night, they're loading their vehicles up with junk, and they're, and they're blighting the, the neighborhood. These, these, I guess I would call them underground businesses, have no regard for their neighbors. If, if you own a property and you live in this neighborhood, this isn't what you want to come home to at night, to your beautiful property and well-maintained area that you have, and it's your largest investment, to have, you know, the junkyard vehicle next to your house. It's just not right. There is, there is, there is an area for people that have scrap metal companies, and there's an area for people that do junk removal. I'm sure it's a, a fine profession. It just doesn't belong on residential streets and in residential neighborhoods. It just doesn't, we, we have ordinances that should protect the residents from having to deal with this. So, I'm working with the city clerk, but also maybe the city solicitor can assist, and also, like I mentioned, the parking and traffic enforcement, to draft a well-worded ordinance to protect the city from having to deal with these types of vehicles being parked on residential streets, and I appreciate some help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ganaso.
Thank you, Madam President. To Councilor Keefe, I'm currently working with the building inspector in reference to the exact same problem you're talking about, and this homeowner had the brazen amount to go out in front of his property and even place a sign. What he does is, he has this truck, pickup truck, he comes in, uses his backyard for a transfer station, he takes the good junk that he can salvage and make money on, and the bad junk, he just, he separates it, and he's got it right in his backyard, right on Fenley Street, where all these property owners up there care for their, and maintain their properties as they should as good citizens. And what's happening, it's paying taking, how long it's taking, myself and the building inspector, we are loving fines against this individual, but I don't think he cares. He's a renter, is, it should be, the landlord should be ashamed of himself, he keeps getting these fines, and, and this keeps occurring. Now, that's one isolated situation in Fenley Street. I have that in several other streets throughout Ward 3. And the good neighbors, they tried to keep their properties up well, and tried to do the law-abiding thing by keeping their properties well, we're not really servicing them, we're not helping them, because it's so long in, in, in the process to remove this from their neighborhood. This poor gentleman in Fenley Street, I just can't tell you how many conversations I've had with him, texts and all, and Benny DiChristofo is sympathetic, and he's listening to us, he's gone to the courts, but it's taken forever to clean up one little mess. And I think some ordinance should be put in place where we strict, heavy, heavy fines, not a mere token of $400, $500, or $1,000. We gotta make it so it's painful to the individual who violates the conscience of the goodwill of this, of the community. And I want to work hand-in-hand, the Councilor Keefe, and then the other councillor, to rid this from our community, because it really shouldn't go before traffic, it's a, it's a zoning violation, code infraction, that the building inspector is well, he's the zoning authority. He can control all that, he has access to that. I ask the residents out there that have anything similar by nature of this experience to take pictures of it, call the Revere Police so we can get an incident report, and then we can formulate a case when we go before a judge. And that gives the tools of the building inspector to go before a judge with the proper evidence. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you. Unfortunately, and I'm sure Councilor Keefe can attest to this, as well as other councilors, this is pervasive throughout the city. Many people do this, and as attested to by Councilor Ganaso, actually. Frankly, I don't, I don't know why we couldn't have had them removed for operating a commercial vehicle on a city street, even though it's not lic, it's not licensed as a commercial vehicle, it's clearly acting as a commercial vehicle in the sense of its weight and its utility. It's too bad you didn't have them ticketed and possibly towed at that time. That's how I would have looked at it. I would also speak to Jim Rose, he's pretty astute on these issues, and I would include him in the conversation. I believe it's a 40U, if I'm not mistaken, we have the ability to fine them up to, I believe, $500 per, per event, and I think we should probably incorporate that and move forward accordingly. We should implement the quickest and most severest penalties possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Keefe, if I may, just make a friendly amendment to include, we have garbage overnight on city streets and maybe piled in private properties to address Councilor Ganaso's concern as well?
Yep, I would agree with that.
Madam President, I think your point of information, I think you should direct this motion to go before the building inspector, not the traffic commission.
So, we'll revise it to, we can have a joint meeting of the traffic commissioner and building inspector, and then we can discuss, we'll just amend it to, all right, so, I'm gonna read it. So, "Motion presented by Councilor Keefe, that the mayor requests the traffic commission and building inspector to establish restrictions for vehicles being used to hold scrap metal and garbage overnight on city streets as well as piled in private properties," and then so on and so forth.
Madam President?
Councilor?
We should also possibly, just for the record, include the actual ordinance regarding licensed businesses in the city, that we increase the fine for unlicensed businesses so that if they're not licensed, they get the highest penalty at the second or possibly third, warning to $500, so like zero, you get a warning for not being licensed. The second time, you get another, you get a fine at, say, $300, and the third one would be a fine at $500 on a 40U, and that way, we can probably stop that from happening as well.
Perfect. Perfect. So to include fines in regulations for licensed and unlicensed businesses.
Right.
All right. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor request a representative from the SUDY office to appear before the city council to discuss their workload and schedule.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So, so since I've been on the city council, I was sworn in last January, we, we really haven't had a chance to talk about, at least in a meaningful way that I can remember, like what is going on in this city with respect to, you know, the treatment and prevention of opioid overdose. What really prompted this motion, and it was really a little unsettling, I don't know if any of you saw it, but now they are mixing fentanyl in with other illegal narcotics. Before I thought it was just opioid-based and now there's other narcotics that they're talking about adding this fentanyl to. So what I really wanted to do was to kind of get an update as to where our community stands with respect to our numbers, are we going in a good direction, we're, you know, you know, maybe year-by-year statistics. You know, I'm really not sure, I, you know, I don't, I'm not down there all the time, but I don't know what hours the, that the office that you're, that you're located in on, on Revere Street is open. You know, just basically, you know, get an idea of what the city of Revere is doing with respect to, like I say, the treatment prevention of opioid overdose and especially now, like it really seems like it's coming to a whole new level if they're adding fentanyl now in other illegal narcotics. That is going to even take an already bad situation and make it worse. So, you know, that's one of the reasons I really wanted to, to bring this to light and to try to get some information. So the city council was updated as to what's going on in our community with respect to this serious public health crisis. We know that the governor has obviously added additional funding toward it. It's being attacked at all levels, local levels, state levels, federal levels and, but as I say, I, we really never, at least in this forum, have had any conversation about where we're at as, you know, as a city in fighting this epidemic and fighting this problem. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. We do have two representatives from the SUDY office here to answer any questions. Similar to, I believe, the rodent issue, the, there are several issues that the city of Revere is facing that are big and ongoing issues that we all know about, rodents, overdoses, traffic. These are things that are ongoing and there isn't an immediate solution to. They're also things that the council wants to discuss in length. So if you guys want to speak and just give a brief overview to some of the questions and then what we can do is offer a substitute committee meeting where we can really dive into deeper questions and thought and any other comments or concerns that the council may have.
Madam President, if I may, you know, and quite honestly, it's very nice that they're here tonight, but, you know, the intention of this motion wasn't to have them come up and coincide with this, it was just to set up a meeting. I was actually going on the presumption that this would be put in committee and the appropriate subcommittee where we could have more time because I don't know if any other counselors were, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming I'll not be the only one with questions, there's probably other people that'll have them. And, you know, sometimes you get your package on Friday, you're not familiar with each and every calendar item by the time Monday rolls around. So, you know, I was hoping that this could be, you know, put in a subcommittee where we could talk about it a little more at length instead of, you know, just kind of now, you know, but if there's any, I mean, I, I've asked a few questions, if you want to answer those, great, but it might be more appropriate just to go to a subcommittee that would handle this type of request.
I agree wholeheartedly and I think it would be appropriate for the committee of the whole and I think that we could discuss that at some length, set aside a half hour, 45 minutes and have that meeting and make it informative, talk to the community about what your resources that you offer, what your hours are and some statistics and things like that that I think the residents will find useful.
Absolutely.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. The last time actually they came before related to a motion that I had made, unfortunately I couldn't make it because I was in the hospital. But I did review the actual meeting itself and there are some things that I, I hope that you can provide us coming forward. And if you don't mind me asking these questions so that you can prepare them, related from, say, 2016 to 2018, yearly, because I'm sure you have the statistics based upon zip code that is provided for the state, how many ODs come from Revere, how many were saved versus, you know, attempted, the amount of knock-in that we've been using through EMS and otherwise. More importantly, what are the number of referrals that you've actually made from your office to actually, a person comes in, "I need help today" and referred them to an actual bed. More importantly, what types of direct services, direct care that you provide, if you provide direct care and counseling at all? How many people you've actually directly cared for? How many of them actually had direct outcomes? What are those outcomes? Any type of benchmarking that you might have relative to outcomes and those populations served? Things of that nature. Is that possible? Perfect.
So I think this is very informative. Counselor Guanasso?
Madam President, I'm very pleased to say they're in Ward 3, their office, and I see quite a bit of the activity that occurs there and I see how they work hand in hand with the occasion that just took place a week or so ago at the bandstand on, on a Sunday night that was well-attended. Their services are vital to our community and everybody talks about the opioid situation. Let the listeners know and the citizens of Revere know, we are doing something about it. We are involved and we are doing our best. As you see concerns from our city council, this isn't just being laid aside, this is a very vital part of our lifestyle now and we have to address it as quickly as possible so we can save people and preserve the life that they should have. So I think they're doing a great thing, Madam President, and I applaud this council for putting forth this type of activity.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotendo, final comments?
And the other part of it that, it just slipped my mind at the moment, I know that you do a lot of grant writing and so forth, but what is it that you need from us? How can you lean on us as a body that provides funding through the auspices of the mayor? You know, it, it's great for all of us to talk about what we need and how you serve in the community, but sometimes you people need financing too, so let's see what we can do for that if, if it's needed at all. So, you know, bring your needs to us as well. Thank you.
Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just going to say the same thing Counselor Rotendo mentioned, you know, I, I think that this is another area where we should, we would like to continue to be involved in what you're doing and how we can help because I can attest, I've had to make that phone call to people in your office to, to ask for some help from some friends that I've had and, you know, lo and behold, that, you know, 15 months later, I'm very happy that it was very successful. So I thank you for the services you provide and we should do more of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keefe. Any other counselors? Well, thank you all for your time and thank you ladies for joining us this evening. I think it's very reassuring to see how proactive we as a body are being, you know, to face some of these really challenging issues because I think we're all very aware that there are many issues that the city can't tackle overnight, but we're making an effort to make progress and to get there and this is one of those that's near and dear to many of our hearts. So we'll send this to the committee of the whole and hopefully we can have some of those statistics and discuss them and offer you some resources as well. Thank you.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor contact the MBTA to trim the trees at the Revere Beach Tea Station from Shirley Avenue to Beach Street. The trimming should create a 10-foot canopy over the walkway. A copy of this motion should be sent to Speaker DeLeo and Senator Boncory for their assistance.
Counselor?
Speaks for itself, Madam President. Thank you.
Anyone on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. We have a couple of late communications, motions?
Late motions. Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor contact Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control and request that all fields and playgrounds throughout the city are treated and monitored for ticks and mosquitoes. According to Public Health Commissioner Dr. Monica Burrell, there are four, there are four more times, four times more West Nile virus human cases this year in the Commonwealth than last year.
So Counselor Patch is going to be taking this up for Counselor Rizzo since he's reached his number for the night and then we'll offer all the counselors to speak on it. So Counselor Patch, any comments or?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I think it was a, a good motion by Counselor Rizzo and it should be spoke upon. It's, it's a problem statewide, but it's also been a problem in the city with the ticks down in St. Mary's and, and other, other parks in the city. So I think we got to have, we have to have something done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Yeah, but this is something, I originally got a call from one organization that said they were having a real problem with mosquitoes. I reached out to inspectional services, they had assured me they were going to contact Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control. I went on the presumption that it was done and I'm not suggesting that they didn't call Northeast or maybe Northeast didn't do it, but the, the problem still exists. And subsequent to that, not only has the problem got worse in the original area, which is down at the high school and down at the Rumney Marsh field, but I've got complaints from people over here at Harry Delarussos Stadium, I've got complaints virtually from people all across the city about a real serious mosquito problem. So this is a ser, I mean, you know, the motion, I guess, you know, speaks for itself, there's four times more West Nile virus. I talked to somebody today that had battled West Nile virus right here in the city of Revere. So, you know, I mean, this is something that we really need to be concerned about and, you know, I'm hopeful that this just isn't one of these motions that goes on the desk and gets signed and processed along. This needs to be prioritized. We need to get Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control out there and spray these areas. We got little kids running around still playing soccer and lacrosse and field hockey and whatever else is going on this time, certainly Pop Warner football. There's a lot going on right now that kids are out there being impacted and while they're playing, of course, the parents and grandparents are standing there watching them. So everybody is subjected to the possibility of contracting, you know, and I'm not trying to raise alarm bells and to, you know, overreact, but it's a reality and the city needs to deal with it. And we have the resources at our fingertips and I think we need to pick up the phone and call them and get them to do the city and, and protect our residents. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotendo?
Thank you. I couldn't echo the, the same type of comments, but this affects the old and the elderly more so than any other group and it's also very hard to treat from a medical standpoint. But that said, with the dominacy of, of what took place this year in the sense of the ability for the West Nile to actually reproduce itself, we've had a bigger than, a smaller year than years past. In fact, it was reported as such. So we should be at least proactive for the coming year because we plan on having more problems as far as heat is concerned in the future. So what we can do today is great, but we should also be planning for next year as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. We ask our children to go out and play and get exercise and participate in area activities. The least we can do is provide a safety for them and their parents and grandparents who go out there to share the same experience with them. So we need to get on this because I see it nightly on the nightly news, how devastating it is once someone gets inflicted by the West Nile bug and then, and then a tick that creates the other activity. It's a serious, serious thing and I'm hopeful that because we have so much wildlife coming closer to us, they're almost domestic wild animals and they're coming into our, into our backyards. I have coyotes in my backyard, I have wild rabbits in my backyard. These are all carriers of a tick of the West Nile. They, they're bringing it right up from the marsh and Counselor Powers shares a lot of marshland, but so does Ward 3 and we're, we're experiencing that and I'm, and we have some, a lot of open playing fields that these kids have to go to and we want them to go there, but we want them to be safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. So the Friends of Belle Isle Marsh, we were supposed to have a fall festival this weekend, Sunday, and we had to cancel it because there's so many mosquitoes down there. We were afraid of affecting people. But what's happening is, this is, besides rats, this year mosquitoes are out of control. Channel 5 called me tonight for a statement because we, because we canceled the, the festival because of mosquitoes. One of my concerns in Revere is McMcInfield because it has stifling water. It, it has water. They have been grooming it, they, they have been keeping up with it, but that's one of my biggest concerns. They have stagnant water up in the field, so maybe we could get them to spray there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? If I may briefly, I think it's a great motion and I, I hope that we can, you know, get some action as soon as possible. However, I think it's a good opportunity then in the meantime, we, you know, let our residents know that it's important to be aware of yourself. If you know you're going to be out for prolonged periods of time, wear clothing that covers you, whether it be long pants or long sleeves and make sure that you're being as proactive as possible, bug sprays, candles if you're going to be sitting outside, things like that, just to do everything you can to protect yourself in the meantime until the city can get the issue under control. Counselor Guanasso?
One further question, Madam President. I've just been informed that outside of City Hall, there are several mosquito beds and there's a mosquito problem right out, as we speak, right outside our building here. So it ought to be attended to as soon as possible to protect not only the employees, but all the visitors coming to City Hall on a daily basis. Thank you, Madam President.
Well taken. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counselor Patch that the mayor request the MBTA to install bus stop shelters on Squire Road at the Showcase Cinema and at Stop &amp; Shop in the interest of public safety and convenience.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. This is well overdue. It's, especially if we could get it done before the winter because when the, they start plowing, the people that have to wait, that bus stop have to wait in the street. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There's no further business. This council is adjourned until October 22nd. We wish everyone a happy Columbus Day coming up and we look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.